I'd call this meeting of the City Council, Mayor and Council Meeting, June 5th, 2017 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by me and then remain standing for the invocation led by Mr. Police Chief Joel Richards.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we love you. We just thank you for another great day of life. God, I thank you for this great city of Carrollton. And tonight, I just ask you to bless the citizens of this community, bless the workers, and bless this governing bodies, Mayor and Council, as they come together to make some very difficult decisions that affect a lot of people's lives. We thank you most of all for your son, Jesus. We pray in his name. Amen.
Brings us down to number four, citizens' comments. Does anybody have anything they want to bring to the council? Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and Tim, if you don't mind before they do that, I would like to ask about the noise ordinance issue. Do my constituents need to stand now or do they need to wait until we?
We had asked the city attorney to look at our ordinance to see if it had teeth to address this issue. If you don't mind me taking a moment, I'll talk about all the things we have done. As you know, Councilman Byrd, you've called me, I would not be afraid to say 15 times about this issue, text on the weekend, texting the night. We've sent people out in the middle of the night. We've sent people from engineering. We've sent people from operations over there. And we even, and I think at some point, we'd like to have Tony Richardson address all of this. We even had a seven-day noise study performed by an outside consultant. And they put sound meters in your neighborhood. They put them near the industries. They put them near the railroad. And I think they even put one on one of our plants just as a baseline number. But I guess at this point, we are not 100% sure that the exact source of the problem. We do know there's sound there. We do know it's unpleasant to some of the people in your neighborhood. I had asked Chuck to look at our ordinance to see if it had enough teeth. I'd asked him to rewrite it. He has rewritten it where we could actually put a DB limit on it. But honestly, I'm not comfortable naming that number tonight. We were considering using the HUD limits on housing. And the study that we had showed that we were under those limits, so that's not going to make people happy to only use those HUD limits. We also asked, we met with Southwire, and I know they are building enclosures around some of their machinery. We have met with, and I've met with Southwire also, and then we met with some people from OFS, which is the old Fytel, a number of times, and they're building some enclosures. I know there's a gentleman here from OFS. I don't know if he's prepared to speak or not, but.
Yeah, let's let him speak. I think my constituents would love to hear from him. And just to, Tim, just to, I guess, interject, if you will, and to bring everybody up to par on the issue here. The cottages of Carrollton is the neighborhood where I live, and we are pretty much backed up on the property of Southwire and OFS. I don't know how many feet we are apart. I think it's a point oh-six miles or something to that effect from each of those. What's happening is, all day long, there's a grinding noise that we experience in our homes, and we cannot sleep. I suffer now from, what is it? Is it insomnia? And my neighbors are also suffering as well, and they are here. And we've met with Southwire. The first person I called, I called Marcel, I think, in January, maybe February. And just asked her, like, do you hear that noise at night that's grinding and shaking our homes? Do you hear that? And she said, Gerald is driving me crazy. I'm up two. She and I met, and then she kept calling me, telling me about it every night. And then I thought, you know what? Let me call Laura Richards. I called Laura Richards about it. And then I met with Southwire, and Marcel, and a few of our residents, homeowners over there, met with Southwire as well. And Southwire agreed, as you said, to build an enclosure to help muffle the noise coming from them. And Marcel has named the source of the noise at Southwire. And then I feel like some kind of private investigator or something. But anyway, I go out at like 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 in the morning in my car and in my PJs over to OFS to search to see if I could find what it was. And I was allowed into the gate of the company when I first went over. It was in cold weather. I think that was probably in February as well. They took me inside and showed me a machine called the ElectraSaver 2. And it was so loud and just so obnoxious. And months later, I met with an official from OFS at my house at 4:30 in the morning to hear the noise. And I think that the individual determined that it wasn't bad enough to her to do anything about it. But we have to change our ordinance, our ordinance, our noise ordinance for industries in Carrollton so that our residents can have peace and so they can sleep. These are hard-working, tax-paying citizens. These are people who are, some of them on medication. It's basically a retirement community where I live. I'm not retired. I actually leave every day and go work, but a lot of them are there all day long. We're talking about holidays. We're talking about Christmas Day. We're talking about Easter. Our house is feeling like an earthquake is underneath them. And it's a piercing noise that just won't go away. I sleep now to lullaby music, but it does not do any good at all. And I know they're all up all night long, and we're really suffering. And so as an elected official, I want to do my part moving forward to make sure, because we're going to probably build something else out that way again. But moving forward, I want to do my part. And man, I'm going to fight this tooth and nail, and I'm not going to stop until something is done. I promise you that. I really am not going to stop. I want these people to get sleep, and I want to get sleep myself. It is annoying. It's atrocious. I don't know any other word for it, but we are all at wits' end over it. And I hope OFS will cooperate with us the way Southwire has in quailing, eliminating, and building enclosures and structures to stop this terrible, terrible noise. And again, I will fight it for my constituents, for myself, even for my pets who are suffering as well. But I think, Tim, if you will, I think Marcel Roy wanted to speak and the rest of the residents as well from.
Ma'am, if you'll come up to the podium and state your name and your address and.
My name is Marcel Roy, and I live at 255 Catherine Court. And these are some of my neighbors, of which I have 12, myself included, 13, including Gerald and one woman on Plowshare Road, Ann McLeary. And I'd like to introduce them. This is Jean Davidson. She lives on Jamie Court. Melanie Cook lives on Catherine Court, and Sarah Huff lives on Catherine Court. And I've been a resident in cottages of Carrollton since December of 2002. And I started logging the amount of noise coming from Southwire in October of last year. I've called the police to my home in the middle of the night. I have the verbiage from the current sound ordinance that says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to make, continue, or cause to be made or continued any excessive, unnecessary, or unusually loud noise, or any noise which annoys, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others within the limits of the city." I have not been able to sleep a good night's sleep since October of last year.
Ma'am.
And I know the sound comes from the Camphil APC system at Southwire. We've gotten some compliance with Ben Schaefer. Is that right?
Pascal.
Pascal, I'm sorry. And they plan on building an enclosure. But at OFS, the machinery is the Whitlock resin handling system. I have taken digital sound readings with a recognized digital sound meter that when I went to a meeting with Southwire, he actually offered me a job. Because he said he's never seen anybody so thorough. But it's very frustrating to have to have this noise in the background when it wasn't existing until around October of last year. And then finally, to be told many things one way or the other. And by law, they're not supposed to be producing this level of sound from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Or 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM, two days a week. That would cripple these businesses for half their working day on two days a week and almost a third on the other five. I want to know why they're allowed to operate with impunity and break the law of the city and not have to deal with any repercussions up until the point of us being driven.
Crazy.
Crazy. I mean, if I can make a demonstration of the sound, if you would like.
No, I just want to, you made a point. I might not have heard you correctly, and I'm sorry. Did you say you have called the Carrollton Police Department?
Yes.
Have they ever investigated it?
Yes, they came to my house.
Well, let me, hold on. What did they tell you after they investigated? That they couldn't enforce the ordinance?
No, I was told that it's a civil matter.
The police, Carrollton Police, told you that?
Yes, a police officer came in my house after midnight, one night that I tried to lay down, and this annoying, people have likened it to a jet engine idling. I register at the back of my house 68 DBs. I have a chart. It's put out by the company, this X-Tech meter, that says 68 is equivalent to the sound of speech at one foot. But if you would like to try and sleep with someone speaking or making this awful noise within one foot of your bed, you try.
And ma'am, note too that we're not talking about an intermittent noise. We're talking about a constant screeching roar that will not go away, like, ever, ever, ever. Like, all day long. It's just.
No, I understand. Did you show the police officers this ordinance? I mean, was he unfamiliar with the ordinance?
I didn't find the ordinance until I looked it up.
Okay.
Because I called the Health Department, Carrollton County Health Department, Carroll County Health Department. I've called the EPA. I've called OSHA. OSHA only applies to the workers nearby.
Right.
And I have the minutes of our meeting with Southwire, and they recognize the level of the sound. At the meeting was Ben Pascal and the Operations Manager, Derek. I've spoken with John McCoy there and Lakeisha Wilson.
I believe everything you're saying. It sounds horrific out there. Did you talk to the city? The only person you talked to is?
No, I did speak to Tim, but then we got a meeting.
Tim, why hasn't it been enforced?
Well, honestly, we don't know the exact source.
We do know the source.
Well, then, good.
We do know. And I was told by you through Gerald that two people had met me and given me a tour, and I couldn't identify it. We've identified.
Tim, you should just go out there, have the police right aside. Let the companies come in and defend themselves.
We can certainly.
Let's do that. I mean, that, we defend people all the time in criminal court. That's what this ordinance is.
To understand, and you and I were going to meet one day, Southwire.
And I'll tell you that I went there at 8:30 in the morning with Lakeisha Wilson, who is a liaison for Southwire. And we were standing outside, and John McCoy came out with hearing protection in. Well, I don't understand. I said, take out your hearing protection. They've offered in the interim until they build their enclosure, they've offered to buy all of the residents that are disturbed by the noise, white noise machines to sleep with or ear protection to sleep with. But I wear ear protection, and I get an excruciating headache because they expand in your ear in the middle of the night. And I'm physically suffering. And.
And I'm tired of trying to find solutions to this mess.
Right.
I'm tired of texting Tim. I'm tired of going back and forth with all these different people. Something that must be done, something will be done. It's going to be done tonight. And they're here. Y'all get up here and come up here and explain us what y'all are going to do.
I went to, I went to OFS on Easter.
Let's pass that resolution now, Matt.
I went to OFS on Easter. I actually had gotten in touch with you on Easter and asked you if you were.
Easter Day. We spent our Easter Day putting up with this crap. Let's get OFS up here now. Maybe, I think we need to be fair. Let's let them tell us like Southwire told us. Hold on, Matt. Let's let them tell us like Southwire told us what they're going to do. Southwire has been compliant. Southwire has been cooperative and apologetic to us. OFS has told me in my own yard, well, I'm sorry. I don't see what the problem is. It doesn't hurt me at all. Do y'all have a plan in place, sir? Do you have a plan in place to stop this nasty noise? Don't sit back there and say that it's not y'all because it is y'all. I've been inside the gate before. You told your security officers to arrest me or whatever you told them to do when I come back out there again, because I saw them running for phones as soon as they saw my car pull in. Whatever's happening. What is a solution to help these people and to stop this noise? Could you come up here and tell us that? And I may be, you can't come up here. Oh, so you don't have a solution?
And I have a woman that I know, her husband's an engineer.
And it's not funny. You can sit back there and laugh all you want to.
He's an engineer, and he said these resin handling systems, which are drying and vacuuming the pellets that coat the wire, the fiber optic wire, and the wiring that Southwire manufactures, they run at a decibel level of anywhere from 90 to 100 DBs. At night, they've lowered it a little bit marginally at Southwire by re-venting it. But even from the minutes that we spoke about at our meeting, they said they can't enclose it within their factory because it would make their workers deaf. And the Whitlock resin handling system that's operating at the back end of their building, I've gone over to printed specialties, and these people are trying to eat their lunch at lunch tables, and it is like a buzzsaw sound that you cannot, I can't even tell you. And it comes through at night. I've gone and I've videotaped it at night. I believe I sent you the videotape. You, it vibrates your body. I have a neighbor who just bought her house, who couldn't be here today because she's ill. She's wondering if she might need to sell her house because she wakes up and she is agitated by the sound. And also, Jean and I, and several of the other neighbors, there's an odor that's coming also from these manufacturers. And it smells like a corn chip odor. And Paul, the engineer who worked for Print Pack and Star Packaging, which are also companies that use these resin handling systems, they said that odor is from plastic melting. And, you know, I want to live here because I like Carroll County and I like the city of Carrollton. My daughter received a great education. I've been enjoying the green belt. I really want to live here. I don't want to move. And I don't like it when my neighbors say they might have to resort to moving because their health is being affected by not getting good sleep every night.
But I would like to know what we're breathing.
So we have a couple of problems that didn't exist when I moved in. Because when I moved in, OFS wasn't operating at the location they are now. And Sony was sort of operating or not where Southwire is now. And I'm concerned.
Marcel, first of all, my apologies to everybody at the cottages and the surrounding areas. Matt and I are going to draft the resolution for the next City Council meeting. He's my co-sponsor on this. And we're going to instruct Joel through this, and Matt, tell me when I'm wrong, because I'm not a lawyer. I'm an artist. But we're going to instruct Carrollton Police Department to go out and cite OFS and anyone else who violates the sound ordinance based on your calls to 911. And then when we come back, we will look at officially next month, changing this law and changing this ordinance to suit not only the residents of Carrollton, but to sue everybody, I'm sorry, to sue everybody and make sure they follow whatever the ordinance is. Anytime they get outside of that, we just need to call 911 and have them cited. And let's do that until the cows come home. You got me? Don't stop, all right? And if I have to use my voice, all right, to get louder, to let everybody hear, because there's small people who y'all know that we can call. I'll call them. I've been very nice about this situation too, but I'm not going to be nice anymore. We're going to do this, though. That's the first step, I think, in the right direction to help people who pay our salaries and the people who elected us to sit up here and represent them. Y'all are hard-working, tax-paying citizens. You have contributed to our society. You're retired now. The rest of your years should be lived in peace and quiet. And I will do all I can while blood is running through, warm through my veins to make sure that you can sleep at night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on any subject, not just this subject? Seeing no one will move ahead. Item number five, the minutes, need a motion to approve and accept? From the May 1st meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Item number six, approval of agenda items for consideration. Need a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Gets us down to 6-1, Ms. Studdard.
First item on your agenda is an annexation and rezoning request by James Eady at 191 Old Bremen Road. He is requesting rezoning and annexation to, from county commercial to the city of Carrollton commercial. In essence, to obtain access to city sewer for that property. You may recall, this particular property is basically an island. Oftentimes, if someone is asking a request to be served by city sewer, and we have a situation like this, we will request that they go ahead and annex in. And this is one of those scenarios. They do not propose any development beyond what is there at this time. The Planning Commission reviewed this request last month, and they recommended approval unanimously, seven to zero.
Any discussion on this, guys? Looks pretty cut and dry to me.
It was the shortest Planning Commission meeting in history, I think.
Wow. So it's just for infrastructure reasons that they?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I'd just like to say, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, it, it's real important that we kinda try to continue this as a policy. I know there's no opposition to doing this tonight, but just, uh, if we don't have people annex in for sewer, then they have no incentive to do that. We also miss out on their, not only their taxes or business licenses. So we, we spend a lot of money on, uh, you know, public safety and, and, uh, all the support of the city. So it's important when these opportunities are here to have, and people annex in that we do that.
Any more discussion on this item, gentlemen? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor? Make a motion. Was anybody here wanting to speak against this? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Resolution oh seven two sixteen Hotel Motel Tax Ordinance. Ms. Studdard?
The resolution that you have before you is the final follow-up to the adoption, uh, and the subsequent approval by state legislature and then the signing by the governor in May of our increase of our hotel motel tax from five percent to eight percent. Uh, I'm available if you have any questions. Uh, this is just a direct reflection of what we've worked on for many months.
Make a motion, we adopt resolution zero seven dash two sixteen, two zero sixteen.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries.
I think there was actually a typo on the agenda. Uh, I think the resolution is oh seven two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
Just clarifying.
Number three, ratification of tax collection contract with Carroll County. Mr. Tripp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You should have in your packet a proposed contract with the Carroll County Tax Commissioner, uh, for the, uh, billing and collection of city property taxes, uh, for the, uh, four-year period, uh, ending December thirty first, uh, two thousand and twenty. Um, the proposed agreement, uh, calls for a billing rate of nine dollars per parcel. Um, and this, uh, rate would include, uh, the, uh, the billing, the printing, the mailing, the collection of city taxes. It would also include the filing of FIFAs, uh, the handling of tax sales for delinquent properties, non-payment of taxes. Um, we have been in this agreement with the Carroll County Tax Commissioner since nineteen ninety-four. It's been a very productive agreement. Um, they have done a great job for us. Um, at the increased rate, our current rate is six dollars per parcel. Um, this rate has been in effect since two thousand and one. And prior to that, it was, um, four dollars per parcel from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and one. So, just like some of the issues that we're dealing with here at the city, um, they're tax customers, they increase exponentially each year and they're doing a lot more workload with the same people. And so, uh, I do feel like the increase is justified. Um, I think based at this new rate, probably the annual bill would be somewhere between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars per year. But I can assure you that's money well spent because, um, number one, we don't have the resources or training uh, to handle the, the legal implications of, um, handling delinquent properties, tax sales. And, uh, the number of people that we would have to hire cashiers, uh, and, uh, billing specialists to handle the generation, the billing, the payment, we could not do that for a hundred thousand dollars a year. And so, uh, Vicky, let's see. In the time I've been at the city, I'm on my third tax commissioner. They've all done a great job for the city and, uh, I would recommend that you, uh, approve this agreement.
Jim, how much is the increase? What was it before this?
It's, it, it's from six to nine dollars. It's three dollars a parcel.
Jim, I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
Mayor may or may not know, in nineteen ninety-four, who used to do this? Um, who used to perform this task for the city?
It was done internally by, uh, the city clerk. And, uh, basically, everything was manual, uh, manual tax cards, manual billing, manual collection and processing. And when we started this agreement, um, with the, the county, it was made, uh, initially available through a government efficiency grant. And, um, that's how we started this agreement with them.
Are there companies out there that perform this, like third-party companies that do this instead of the county? I'm, I'm just a little shocked that nine dollars per parcel, that's a lot of money to me. Um, I would think they could do it for less than nine dollars per parcel.
There are, but I don't know the specific names and locations of those companies.
Um, and you didn't investigate? I mean, one thing that Tim Grizzer does a good job, before we buy any vehicle or do anything, we go out and try to get competitive bids. You didn't even try to see what other cities were doing?
Well, no, and I guess, I guess that our rationale on that was, um, local tax commissioner and, and especially, um, the enforcement of delinquent liens and, and tax sales. Um, we, we've just been doing that with them for a long time and it worked well.
I guess I'm a little lost with delinquent tax sales because delinquent tax sales is gonna be county. I don't know why the city has to even be, I mean, there's, I've, I've, I do a lot of work with delinquent tax sales and I never see the city anywhere in delinquent tax sales. It's just the county who.
Well, you know.
Let me finish.
Yes, sir.
Who do the FIFAs.
Yes, sir.
And then they do the tax sales.
Sure.
I never see the city doing anything, so I'm kind of at a loss. You keep talking about the city can't handle that.
Well, you know, wh- when a, um, tax bill on, on parcel becomes delinquent, um, uh, most of the time, uh, it's been my understanding that if somebody in the city, uh, they're, they're delinquent on their county bill, that includes their city taxes as well. And so they, they, we've always understood that they've handled the tax sale to, for county taxes as well as city taxes on a par, a parcel property.
And I can tell you that, um, one reason the number didn't scare me is, and I, and I have not run the number on this in a long time, but it cost about five bucks to process a water bill. And that's something we're doing every month. And to look at something that was only done once a year, I knew the overhead would be higher. So the number didn't seem terribly high to me. Now, we could look. They also, um, and I'm, and Marty's a good friend, Marty Smith, I'm certainly not criticizing what he doing, but he came to us with this, what, Jim, about three or four weeks ago?
Yes.
I think what he's got is a new finance man that is really running his cost on everything. And so they determined that this was their actual cost. So again, you know, my judgment on it, it, it passed the smell test because again, of what it costs us to process a water bill, uh, it didn't seem like a huge number. So, um, with that said, we could certainly go look, we just need to look quickly.
Yeah, well, you're saying it's five dollars per water bill?
Yes, sir, per month.
Every month?
Yes, sir.
And this is, but this tax bill goes out one time.
Yes, sir.
And the collections go to the county, didn't come to the city.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I just, I don't, nine dollars just seems high to me.
Oh.
That's all.
We could have Lehman Stevens come forward and show us the numbers. One thing he's excellent at is running those costs and he could show us the actual part numbers.
A- and the other thing, you know, it, obviously, you know, consolidated bill, it's got the county tax, the city tax, the city school tax, everything is consolidated. And then, uh, when somebody makes the payment, Vicky and her staff, they break it out and distribute the proceeds to the individual government entities.
What about, what about the other municipalities in Carroll County? Villarica, Temple, Mount Zion, Bowden, are they using the county as well?
They are, now, I think Bowden, they bill their own taxes, don't they, Libby? Are you familiar with that? Yeah.
Is the county charging them nine dollars a parcel too?
I think it's a uniform rate.
Bremen's the only one I know that bills their own and they do their own, uh, delinquent sales.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the ratification of tax collection contract with Carroll County at the new negotiated rate of nine dollars a parcel.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, that's not saying I'm gonna vote for it, but just to put it on the agenda, put it on the table.
All right, sir. Um, all in favor of?
Can we have debate?
Debate, yes, go.
Real quick, Tim, I, I agree with you, time is of the essence. Um, I am just curious if there are third-party administrators out there, lack of a better word. I don't know if Chuck knows of any sorts. Um, I'm just curious.
City attorney, we've always done it through contract with Carroll County.
Right.
So we, I, we've never, to my knowledge, at least I haven't been asked to explore what other options might be available. But I think that probably explains why you haven't seen the city of Carrollton involved in, in the tax sales because by contract, that's included as part of the service that the county provides to us. But the short answer to your question is, is no, I've not been asked to look at that.
Um, I, I still, I, I fail to see when there's a someone that paid their tax bill, the county's the one that's gonna bring, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna be the one that puts the FIFA on, they're gonna be the one that does the tax sale. Um, so I guess I should have made a motion to table this and see if Tim wanted to do an investigation just to see so I can feel better, but.
Be glad to do that, if you like.
Well, there's a motion, the motion's here, I second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Of, um, ratification of tax collection contract with Carroll County, please raise your hand. All against? Three to one, motion carries. Can we put something in the agenda that we look for next year though? If we've, I mean, I know the tax bill's getting ready to roll out right now, so.
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
Chuck, we're getting on you now. Green Belt Donation Development Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As probably everybody in the room knows, through the product of a lot of hard work by a lot of people, uh, the Carrollton Green Belt is now completed. Uh, there was the official opening back in April. Um, all of the property is either currently owned by or subject to leases running in favor of the city of Carrollton. What you have before you tonight, and there has been, there have been even through late today, some changes to the proposed agreement. But I'll circulate the latest version of this. But what is before you is the approval of a donation agreement by the Friends of the Carrollton Green Belt LLC to the city of Carrollton, which I'm calling sort of the turn the keys to the city or turn the keys over to the city kind of document. Um, there are, of course, contracts and all that were led. And for those of you that don't know, a lot of the heavy lifting for the Green Belt was done by a nonprofit group formed for that purpose called the Friends of the Carrollton Green Belt. And that nonprofit group entered into a series of contracts with various providers and all for bridges and concrete and all that kind of stuff. Essentially, what this does, Mr. Mayor, is it just, um, turns over to the city all of the rights and liabilities associated with the Green Belt moving forward. Um, so that we essentially have the responsibility for maintaining the Green Belt. But at the same time, we also have rights of recovery if it turns out to be, you know, any issues with products that were used to construct the Green Belt and that kind of stuff. So the purpose behind this agreement is essentially to hand over to the city all of the rights, obligations, responsibilities, liabilities to the Green Belt.
I'm assuming you're saying warranties on the products?
That's right.
Everything comes to the city.
Lock, stock and barrel.
Chuck, I read this thing a lot and I, I'd see it's been rewritten now, um, so.
And, and the, and just by way of explanation, the, the version that was in your packet was one that was presented to us by the Friends of the Green Belt. And it was a holdover from a prior quote-unquote master agreement that the city had entered into with the Friends of the Green Belt that set forth how we move forward with the construction of the Green Belt. And there were some provisions in that agreement, in the proposed agreement that was in your packet that frankly didn't make sense, given the fact that the Green Belt has been constructed. So what you have tonight is a revised version that takes out those things. Um, and I think more accurately reflects where we are in the, in the process, which is a completed Green Belt.
Um, I see paragraph five, as part of the fundraising efforts, the Friends shall retain all naming rights in perpetuity for portions of the Green Belt for which the Friends donate funds and services, including without limitation, trailheads, mile markers, pocket, so on and so forth. So are we saying there, they're gonna have the right to name certain areas, the benches?
I, I think with respect to things that are funds or services that are donated, um, for the Green Belt moving forward are things that were, uh, funds and services that were donated in the past. So in theory, there could be something that's on the Green Belt now that the Friends may want to have named, uh, for someone that contributed those funds or those services. And I suppose moving forward, I, I thought about that language. I, I think it's at least theoretically possible that we could have a situation where there might be future fundraising efforts for some purpose that the Friends might do on behalf of the city, whether it's a new trailhead or a new something that they would wanna preserve the naming rights to. Or they would wanna have the naming rights to.
That was the one section that, um, draw my, drew my attention as well, just the, uh, naming rights in perpetuity for all portions of anything that was donated, which is, for the most part, the entire thing that's been built.
It, it's certainly a lot of what's been built. Now, some of the Green Belt was built on property that was already owned by the city or acquired by the city and was not necessarily donated. Some of it was stuff that the city purchased. And I believe the same is true for, for some of the construction work that was done on the Green Belt. So it's not, it was not all done by donation, but certainly there's a substantial portion of it that was done by donation.
And my fear isn't that we're gonna have, uh, corporate sponsors all along, along the whole thing. The whole Green Belt is absolutely beautiful, it looks fantastic. Um, but it definitely drew my attention, um, just having that on there.
Who, 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 who told you to put this language in there?
It was in the draft that was presented to us by the attorneys representing the Friends of the Green Belt.
Have you had any discussion with them over this particular language?
I have not.
And if you go back to paragraph, well, not go back to, paragraph one, just so I understand this and I, I understand my, the predecessors of this or the prior administration did all this, but does, did the, did the Friends own certain tracts of land? I thought everything was owned by the city, the dirt.
Everything is owned by, i- it's either on property owned by the city or by easements that run in favor of the city. I, I view this, Matt, it'll make more, but I, I view this more as sort of a, a quick claim deed, if you will. What, whatever interest the Friends of the Green Belt has in the Green Belt by virtue of this agreement is now turned over to the city. You say, what are those interests? They primarily are going to be things contractual rights that the Friends might have, uh, by virtue of contracts they entered into. Just by way of example, some of the bridges on the Green Belt are prefabricated bridges. So they, they were brought on site, they were installed. Um, let's say that something happened with the bridge and it fell down or, or something. This, in my view, gives the city the right to pursue, for example, those contract rights that right now run in favor of the Friends of the Green Belt. So is that? Just using that as an example.
Is that group dissolved now?
I, I don't believe they're dissolved and I wouldn't anticipate them being dissolved.
Okay.
And, and I can't rule out the possibility that there might be, you know, further work done by the Friends of the Green Belt, um, at the request of the city. So it, it's not necessarily meant to end the relationship, but to, as I said, to turn the keys over for the Green Belt to the city, whatever interest they have in it as we sit here today.
Which interest?
Apparently, the, the interest they still have is they get to name everything perpetuity.
I'm not, I'm not offending it, I'm, you know, I'm just telling, telling you what the document says. Uh, but yeah, I mean, I think they retain that right for portions of the Green Belt for which the Friends donated funds or services. I, I don't read that provision to mean that they have exclusive naming rights, but they retain naming rights.
That, we could say this merges into that quick claim, are they gonna actually sign a quick claim deed?
No.
No.
Well, I mean, we haven't asked them to.
Seems feasible to me. Any more discussion, Gerald? Roy? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, what number is that, number four?
Four.
I move we approve the Green Belt Donation and Development Agreement as presented to us tonight.
Have a motion, but have a second. Have a second. Any more discussion before we drop the hammer on this? Hearing none.
I'd like to say one thing, I'm very excited to get the keys to this Green Belt. The city of Carrollton's finally really getting it, this is extremely exciting.
It is.
And so thank you to the Friends group. This is really quite exciting.
I agree, I think it's exciting, but I do want to know that we're losing the naming rights. I mean, we will not have those because it says, "The Friends shall retain all naming rights," so we're losing that for future, if we ever want to name something out there, I guess we can go to the Friends and ask them.
Yes, success.
Ask them adjustments to them.
It also, it says for anything that they've donated, that doesn't mean that we can't ourselves put up things.
That's how I read it. It says, "As part of its fundraising efforts, the Friends shall retain all naming rights in perpetuity for portions of the Green Belt for which the Friends donates funds or services." And then it lists some things like the trailheads, the mile markers, the pocket parks, benches, and other park amenities. So I read that to mean things that were contributed or donated by the Friends and not to the exclusion of the city. So if y'all want, for example, to name something Connery Causeway, then I think you would do with your rights to do so.
But if some civic group in town wanted to put some benches out, they could go to the Friends situation and do that, and Lions Club, Kiwanis Club, somebody that wanted to do some bench situations.
So they would come to us, not to the Friends, right? Or they could go to Friends, if I want to buy a bench and put out there and name it after my dog, I have to go to the Friends of the Green Belt in order to do that, right?
I don't, I think you could, but I think you could also go to the city. Erica, do you have thoughts on that? I mean, again, I don't think this is meant to preclude the city from taking a donation or a gift and then naming something after whoever makes the donation or gift to the city.
The donation typically currently, and we intend to continue to process that donation through the Community Foundation of West Georgia Fund for the Green Belt, and so you would do it through the Friends of the Carrollton Green Belt, and then we would process that and then put your bench up, so.
This provision, I think, was meant to be more forward-looking and to leave open the possibility that there might be future fundraising efforts that were done by the Friends to benefit the Green Belt and to allow for the possibility that they would then be able to control the naming rights for those fundraising.
Logistically, they typically come to the city first, just because it's a city park.
Now, let me ask another question, and we may have answered this already, but will the Green Belt be under the Carrollton Parks and Recreation Department though, like in terms of maintenance and?
It currently is, it is part of the, it's basically a linear park within the Parks and Recreation Department. It fits in with their park system, just, they just went through their planning efforts and it's part of that, included in that, and it will continue that, so.
Awesome.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, I assume we're ready to vote. All in favor of? We haven't voted on yet. We'll go back to discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
We have a motion and a second, but we went back to discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Chuck, you're up again, Harry Morgan Building Lease with the Carrollton Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, at your December meeting, Mayor and Council approved the transfer of the Harry Morgan property, or the Harry Morgan Building property to the Carrollton Board of Education. That property, if you recall the discussion, was developed with two grants, one from the Department of Community Affairs, a Community Development Block Grant, and the other from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. We've been working for the past few months to try to get the property released from those grants, or at least the repayment obligations under those grants. The transfer of that property, in theory at least, would, could trigger a repayment obligation. We recently learned from the Department of Community Affairs that they have approved the transfer and have agreed that it won't re-trigger, won't trigger the repayment obligations. We are still waiting to hear from the Department of Health and Human Services, so what the school system has asked, that in the interim, we just go ahead and lease the property to them, move forward with the transaction with a view towards getting the approval from HHS, and at some point thereafter, we would deed the property to the city school system. But this would be something to be put in place in the interim so they could go ahead and start making preparations to use the, use the school, use the building.
In this upcoming school year.
For this upcoming school year.
And again, it's going to be an alternative school, correct? Am I right about, remind us the?
No, it is what is commonly referred to as the Burwell Program, but it's a program for special needs, special need students, and it benefits the city schools, the county schools, and even Heard County schools.
This is something that I want to know, I mean, we're talking about naming things after people tonight, let's put in this somewhere that they have to maintain that Harry Morgan name, because I think that name is important to somebody. I think it's kind of, maybe it's a little ludicrous to name a building Burwell when originally that building was in the town or the community of Burwell, which is why it has that name, and then there's a certain stigma, stigma that goes along with that as well. So I hate to see the Harry Morgan name just go under like that after, after such an honor for such a great person that I've heard, you know, wonderful things about. I don't personally know Harry Morgan, but I think if this man is, if his life warrants naming a building after him, I certainly would hate to see us drop that name.
Gerald, similar documents I saw, and it's been a while, there've been a lot of iterations on this, but some of the documents I saw from Caffey originally had that requirement, so I think they want to see that before they transfer, unless that is changed.
So it could be something like, I mean, I don't, I know they can name it what they want, but Harry Morgan Center for Behavioral Educational, I don't know what, you know what I mean? I mean, I wouldn't want anybody to name something after me and then take my name down while I'm still alive, you know what I mean?
Repairs to the building will be?
Everything is the responsibility of the lessee, or in this case, the school system under the lease.
I know this is very important for the school system to get ready for the school year that's coming up August, so they're trying to revolve antsy about getting moving with this.
Yes, I understand.
It's coming out of, oh, Alabama Street School. Any more discussion on this?
Oh, let me ask you, the old Alabama Street School, what's the plans for that, do you know?
I don't, under the original proposal, and it would carry forward with this, Caffey would take title to that property. Recall, Gerald, that the, Caffey has a reversionary interest in this property, so once the lease expires, the property goes to Caffey. So that interest, that reversionary interest had to be acquired, and the county has agreed to contribute money to that effect, and the school system is going to contribute money to that effect. This is all being done without any, any money being committed by us, by the city. Thank you.
Any more questions? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Harry Morgan Building Lease with the Carrollton Board of Education.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Mr. Richardson, Vehicle Bid Award, Recreation Parks Magnus Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Parks and Facilities Division of the Recreation Department has currently budgeted $33,000 for the purchase of a one-ton, regular cab, four-wheel-drive truck with a utility service bed. Quotes were requested from local vendors and compared to the state bid list for this type vehicle. The state bid list is Allen Vigil Ford at $34,348. We received a bid from Walker GMC for $34,933.61, and we received a bid from Scott Evans Dodge in the amount of $33,695 and was the lowest bid. We did not receive bids from the other two vendors. So at this time, city staff recommends to award this purchase to Scott Evans Dodge, the low bidder, at $33,695.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a point, if you're curious, one of the operations managers taking bids on a rec department vehicle, in years past, we had confusion where different departments were calling different vendors, and one day they might hear from the water department, and the next day they might hear from the rec department, and that created confusion, and we found that Tony had a particular expertise in vehicle bids, so he handles that for everyone unless it is a specific public safety kind of vehicle, so that's why you're seeing Tony present this.
Thank you, sir. I was wondering that one myself. Any discussion, guys?
You're an expert on acquiring vehicles. Is it good to go?
Tony, is this going to be a, is this diesel or gas?
It's gasoline.
Yeah, it's a good deal. I'm all good. Have a motion we accept?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept Scott Evans Dodge bid and purchase the 2017 Dodge Ram.
Second. Motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Joel, Vehicles Purchase, Police Department.
I've got a supplement to his memo on purchasing these vehicles. He did originally.
And I don't have my memo, I think we gave it to Libby today when we already did it.
Second, Joel had originally, he had bought a Dodge Charger back January or February of this year, was very happy with the product. We originally sent out in the package for the purchase of three more. We determined that it would take until October to receive these vehicles, so we really need to go ahead and purchase four, so the supplement I just gave you is to up that purchase, and Joel, if you don't mind, I'll just go through it. We have determined it's on these police vehicles, it's better to go to the state contract holder, which is, the people in Winder, I'm looking for it. Akin Ford Dodge Jeep Chrysler, that's enough, that represents enough brands, certainly. The purchase price of these vehicles is $27,131.75. The total purchase price then for Ford would be $108,524. That's for a 2018 Dodge Charger Pursuit. These vehicles are especially made for police work, they're specially equipped. And Joel, you need to describe the screens and the computers in the back and those sort of things that come with them.
You know, it's the same point we talked, we've come before you in February that we're buying, it has the N-DASH computer with it, so we don't have to buy a separate computer, computer mount. It's got the ambush alert, the one we got did not have it, but these new ones will have an ambush alert, so if an officer's sitting stationary and somebody comes up to them, it will notify him that there's somebody approaching the vehicle. We've not bought new cars in two years, and quite frankly, Chris just told me that we've got 10 cars between 115 and 140,000, so this is just going to kind of be putting Band-Aid on it, but Tim did say from now on, we'll just go back to what we used to do, putting four in the budget every year. That's how we've survived.
We've increased our revenue due to fines, the drug fund revenues increased, and frankly, if we don't fund this out of splosh in future years, this is funded out of splosh, but if we don't fund it out of splosh in future years, we actually think the general fund can carry it, but Joel has worked well with us, I know this was something Walt wanted to do, it's something I wanted to do, we wanted to push these cars beyond 100,000 miles, and he's pushing them to 120, 140, that sort of thing, so we are getting more life out of them.
So when we buy two, we're going to retire, I mean, by four, we will retire, I'm sorry, I'm tired, but when we buy four, we will retire four.
Tim, I'm just curious, two questions. Question one, what happens to the retired vehicles? And then question two, the last paragraph you said that, "We have found that the public safety vehicle is better to purchase from the state contract holder," do you have intimate knowledge of the options available on these vehicles? I'm just curious what that, that language means compared to dealership.
Well, a couple of things, one is we'll auction off the old ones, and there's an auction company that the sheriff uses, we found that works well for public safety. Sometimes we run our own auctions, but we tend to auction one time a year for machinery like out of public works, but for public safety, these things come out on a rotation, we don't want to sit and hold them nine months, so we send them to the auction that the sheriff uses.
We'll keep two, because every three years, every officer has to recertify what's called EVOC, Emergency Vehicle Operation Course, and PIT, Precision Mobility Nation Technique, and we do that in the parking lot at Six Flags, so we obviously don't want to take good cars out there to do that, because they pretty much have to come back on a tow truck.
But then you take some of the old PIT cars out of service, so when four come in, four come out, unless we were adding staff.
That's correct.
What was your, oh.
Intimate knowledge.
Well, I was talking to Chris, and he's, because we try to buy local, and he had bought local before and missed out on some options that neither he nor the local dealer knew were there, and but the company that did the state contract knew about these options, and there were things more available, so we realized that we, as much as we like to buy local and we, you know, you can see that we do every chance we get, it's probably a mistake with these vehicles, we need to go to the folks who deal with this kind of vehicle all the time.
These are more specialized, they're more specialized vehicles, they're not just buying a truck over here.
I want to know how Akins got so lucky, you know what I mean?
You know, for those who don't know, there is a state bid list, there's a state procurement department, and they bid out all kinds of things, and police cars is one of the things they do, and it'll, you know, I've seen, I've not bought that many police cars in my life, I've bought a lot of dump trucks and service trucks and backhoes, and it'll be, you know, somebody around Atlanta, it could be somebody as far south as Valdosta, and again, these are, this company's at Winder.
Will?
I'd like to say thank you for looking at more cost-efficient vehicles, instead of just going with Taho's or going with something else like that. I know you guys take care of your vehicles, and I appreciate all that.
And speaking of that, Joel, and I back you 100%, but could you explain, because sometimes I get calls saying, "Hey, I saw a police car sitting in front of Walmart and it was running, and I was in there for 45 minutes, I came out and it was still running." What's the idea behind that?
We were probably there on a shoplifting arrest, we do that about three or four times a day, and you've got a $5,000 dash cam, you've got a $4,000 laptop computer, in addition to your Sirene console and a $5,000 radio, that if you leave that car and it gets to 100, 110 degrees in there, your whole system shuts down, so we do that to protect the equipment.
Kind of like leaving your phone in the car.
Yeah. I left my phone in the, I don't know what that's called, with this dashboard or whatever, and it said, "Please place phone in cooler area," too.
They got about over $20,000 worth of equipment right there in the front compartment.
And I promise you, I'm asking that question.
Oh, listen, I get asked it all the time, too. Tim's asked me that numerous times.
They think you're wasting money and all this stuff.
Well, the little gas that it wastes is a lot better than having to replace camera systems, and that's what IT tells us, is you got to keep these things cool.
Now we know.
Any more discussion? I'd like to make a motion we approve. Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Congratulations, Joel. Tim, Cross Street Wooden Bridge Project Update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I mean, obviously, this project is done, Libby, if you wouldn't mind, did we give you those photographs to put up? I want you to at least know all that had to be done to that bridge, and I want you to know the final bill, I know we've been reporting it to you every month, but in case you didn't find it in your package. We were required to replace, we started off with a crossbeam on one of those top trusses, we wound up replacing more crossbeams, more columns, and if you can see the concrete under the apron of that bridge, we had to do helicore tiebacks into the bank, this is things that the railroad made us do, those tiebacks were over $1,000 each, we had to put steel matting down, we had to play shotcrete on top of the steel matting, and I'm not proud of this fact, but I want you to hear the number, the total final bill on this bridge repair was $215,700. The total final bill on this bridge repair was two hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars. And, you know, that's not, the only good news about it is it's repaired right and it should last a long time. And hopefully we won't have to touch it again. Uh, Libby, if you would get a couple of, if you could get one of the surface, because we even redecked the bridge while we had the permit. And we found that we could actually get creosote treated lumber. I thought that was illegal, but it is actually legal for railroad bridges. And so, uh, if you would like a breakdown on any of this cost, uh, the decking was fifty-one thousand dollars. Uh, the hardware itself was seventy-four hundred dollars. And the guys working on it would be allowed to work two hours and then called off because a train was coming or mobilize and wait and then sent away. I know we were shut down an entire week. So, uh, it's a beautiful bridge and they did a great job. Uh, the insurance alone was twelve thousand dollars. Uh, I'm just, I just want you guys to know, uh, I don't want there to be, you know, I want to fully disclose what we spent. And again, it's been in your package, but I thought it's enough money and it was a frustration, enough frustration to the public that I wanted to be very clear, the amount of time and work that went into this bridge. Uh, and again, it's a beautiful job. It should last a long, long time, but, uh, I wanted to disclose that to you.
Tim, and I think the Croft Street Bridge is, I mean, it's, it's a jewel in the crown. But, um, I, I just wonder how much more, I have actually two questions. How much more would or less would it have been to go with like a traditional, like non-wooden bridge? Does it have to be wooden? And did we go with wooden because of charm? Or did we go with it because of utilitarianism or whatever the word is?
I'm not noted for charm, uh, so I, oh, honestly, we talked about putting a, a concrete and steel bridge there. And if we changed the bridge, the railroad would make us raise it, I believe, eight feet. Uh, and if we do that, the approach ramps will be so steep to taper out, we would be blocks away. So it just, it just wouldn't work. We would literally be buying people's homes to make it work.
And for the record too, I like it and I think it's a lot of fun. And I've, I've always loved on that bridge since I was a little kid, so.
Any more questions? Mr. Jim. FYI, two thousand sixteen seventeen budget amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have presented for your consideration, um, seven budget amendments to the current FY seventeen budget. Um, I'll just briefly go through those. Um, amendment, post amendments, uh, number one and two, uh, relate to the class, reclassification of salaries in the finance department and the rec programs division that were improperly classified in the original budget. Um, that happens from time to time.
Jim, real quick, what do you mean classification? The count number was wrong?
They, they were identified in the wrong department and we're putting them in the right department.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Um, amendment number three, um, is, um, moving electricity. You know, uh, when we approved the budget last year, um, the, um, recreation department budget, um, it says to transfer electrical utilities from recreation department to general administration for the arts center. We had originally budgeted, um, the arts, um, electrical utilities and recreation. And, um, the reorganization of the arts from recreation to, um, community development. That was done subsequent, um, to the budget being prepared. And so we're trying to get a, um, budget for electrical utilities for the arts, um, out of the recreation into general administration. Also, when we approved the budget last year, we were just opening the, um, police evidence building right behind us. We did not have a good handle on the estimated amount of what the electrical utility for that facility would be. Um, based on where we are, uh, at this point in time, we are estimating that the electrical consumption on that building is approximately eighteen thousand dollars a year. So, um, we are funding that by this proposed amendment. Amendment number four, um, relates to the mayor and council, increased, uh, travel and training expense of fifteen thousand dollars. Amendment number five, um, this is where it gets really interesting and kind of, uh, yeah, interesting in my opinion. Uh, amendment number five is, uh, to record the insurance reimbursement revenue and the associated expenditure, um, for the recreation maintenance barn that was destroyed by fire in October of last year, four hundred thousand dollars. Amendment number six, same scenario, recording the insurance reimbursement revenue and the associated expenditure related to the fire station that was destroyed, um, by the tornado in April of this year. That's three hundred thousand dollars. Um, that building, uh, is an old prefab concrete building. It was built in nineteen seventies approximately. Um, it's insured for three hundred thousand dollars. And so we're presenting this amendment for, uh, what we expect to get reimbursed. Um, Tim, you probably know more about this.
Let me stop you real quick. Just make sure nobody, oh, gets concerned over that. We met with the insurance company. They're going to pay a lot more than three hundred thousand dollars on that bill in the way our insurance is written. But Jim is doing this amendment because of what is expected to come in in this fiscal year.
Correct.
And just while I've got you stopped, we do these amendments because as you know, we take our audit very seriously. Uh, previ, until your administration, the audits had not been present, had not been presented publicly in a long time. We present those publicly and these amendments keep us from getting dinged where, oh, if something's in the wrong category, if there's more revenue and more subsequent expense, uh, if we don't do these amendments, we'll be dinged in the audit. So that's what, that's why he's going through these.
Um, amendment number seven, um, in April, um, we had a traffic accident over on Alabama Street that, um, damaged, um, several headstones in the cemetery. And, um, this likewise is recording the insurance revenue reimbursement and the associated expense of, um, repairing the damage, uh, to our graveyard, the headstones.
So we have to pay for the damage that that person?
No, sir. We have already been reimbursed by that person's insurance company.
Okay, I got you.
Yes, sir.
We had to spend it out and we never got the money coming back.
I got you.
You got to wish them a wash.
It's amazing, we haven't had, I can't ever recall until now, ever processing an insurance claim for fire, tornado and graveyard damage, and we've had one of each in six months. So it's just one of those years.
Is that the damage that you can see on Alabama Street right there at the red light where there's a whole bunch of?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So when would that be repaired? So are they carving, recarving exact replicas of those marble headstone? What are we gonna do with the, I don't want them, never mind. I'm sorry. I was about to ask, what are we doing with the old headstone?
And we are already in receipt of the check from that person's insurance company. So we're ready financially.
Is that all of them, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Have a motion to accept.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Why, why are we making a motion to accept the amendments? We're not voting on this. It's just FYI.
No, no. You need to approve these amendments. This is modifying our budget.
Well, ho, hold on. Um, if we wish to amend the budget in July, do we have to publish it now? I mean, can we make changes to the budget in July? You understand what I'm asking, Chuck?
If you are after the, the fiscal year end, which is June thirtieth, the auditors will ping us for these issues. But that's why we ask you to amend it the last month so that we.
Okay, so we're amending the, the fiscal two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Okay, I'm sorry. I was thinking we were doing seventeen, eighteen. I was like, whoa, okay. I'll make a motion we adopt amendments one through seven as outlined.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Jim, you're up again. Number ten, FYI, two seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget, public hearing.
Does anyone need a, an extra copy of the budget? Um, does everybody have their copy that we sent to y'all or do y'all need an extra copy? Anybody in the audience, we have, um, a few copies here if you'd like to get that and look. As we start off discussing the budget proposal for the FY seventeen eighteen year, as I do every year, I'd like to thank my fellow department heads. Um, most of us have been working together for a long time. Um, and they do the hard work, um, and they always, uh, submit the information to the finance department in a very orderly form. And they, they, um, they do their research and they make my job a whole lot easier. And I, I just always want to thank them for their, their hard efforts in that. You have presented before you the, the main operating budgets for the city, the general fund, the water sewer fund, the sanitation, also the hazardous materials fund, um, the, um, hotel motel tax fund and the drug seizure fund. We'll start off in discussing just general fund highlights. The general fund that we are proposing, submitting to you for your consideration totals just over twenty-five point one million dollars. It's an increase from the current year budget of approximately two point two million, ten percent. Uh, we would like to emphasize that, uh, once again, we are submitting this, uh, proposal with, uh, no millage rate increase, uh, proposed. And, uh, we're proud that we have continued that streak since nineteen ninety-three of no millage rate increase. Um, this is a budget that plans and anticipates for a projected growth and development within the city. Uh, the last few years, uh, we slowed down during the recession. We stabilized. And now we're starting to see things pick up, um, number of customers, business activities, things we're trying to promote within the city. Uh, but with that, um, comes the need for sometimes additional personnel to help manage that growth and, uh, provide the services that, um, our citizens are accustomed to. And that's what we're attempting to do with this budget. Large part of this budget increase is related to new positions that will help the city, as I said, effectively manage growth and development as it comes our way. One area where, uh, we are proposing new positions is in our community development, uh, department. We have proposed a new marketing director. That individual would be responsible for marketing the city in terms of events, venues, making the city, uh, more visible. Also in community development, we are proposing the addition of a codes enforcement officer. Um, up until this year, we have been able to combine the building inspector and the codes enforcement position. Um, during the recession years, when things have slowed down, that individual was pretty effectively able to do both of those jobs. But as, uh, construction and development have increased, it's becoming increasingly difficult for that, uh, one person to do both of those jobs. And so we're recommending, um, splitting that and, and putting that into two positions. In our public safety department, we are, um, proposing two new school resource officers to be allocated to the Carrollton City School System. Um, part of that, those salaries will be reimbursed by the Carrollton City School System.
Jim, I know we've talked about that before. Are we talking, they already have one officer, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna add two more and make it three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's just one more.
Um, in addition to the SROs, we're, um, budgeting for two new, uh, police officer positions. And then we're also budgeting for one additional municipal court clerk. Uh, we've talked about the management of the municipal court function, um, in several different arenas of the past year. Um, the caseload is increasing, uh, the number of people that come through each week is increasing. And, um, it's getting harder for the existing number of clerks to handle the increased caseload. So we're, we're hoping to help that with the addition of a new clerk. Um, in the public works area, we're proposing the addition of a new heavy diesel, heavy equipment mechanic. Um, the mechanic that we currently have on staff, he services the fire trucks, the garbage trucks, our heavy diesel equipment. He has saved the city a lot of money by being able to repair in-house rather than farming out the dealership's repair facilities. But he's overwhelmed. We had two or three departments during the budget process tell us that he has more work than he can physically get done. And we had two or three departments tell us, recommend that we look at hiring an, an additional mechanic for the garage. And so that's what we're attempting to do here in this budget. Um, we'd like to make the point and emphasize that these budgeted positions will not be filled unless absolutely needed. We're, we're putting them in the, in the budget for planning purposes. Um, considering the projected growth, it may come later rather than sooner. And if it does come later, we won't fill the positions and incur the expenditures.
Jim, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
Uh, while we're on that subject, I would like to, uh, reemphasize, um, a statement that I made in February and a request that I made to the city to remember in hiring these new people and creating these new positions that seize the opportunity to diversify our city staff, uh, especially those people in key positions, uh, the hiring, firing positions. Uh, I was challenged on, uh, the comment that I made, uh, via social media, um, saying that there were people, uh, employed by the city of Carrollton. I'm not talking about general positions. I'm talking about those positions where they have department heads or where they can hire and fire. Let's remember to, um, to implement, uh, more diversity. And when I say diversity, specifically I'm referring to people of color in those positions. Thank you.
We'll, we'll note that and do that.
Please do. Thank you.
Sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, this budget, we are proposing a pay increase and it's a blended pay increase, a one percent COLA, uh, cost of living, and then another two percent, uh, merit base, based on performance review of the employees. Those two elements combined would average a three percent pay increase. And also in this budget, from a personnel standpoint, we are, uh, projecting an increase of seven percent in our group health insurance expense. This comment, I'm fixing to make it, not only applies for the general fund, but the water fund and sanitation fund as well. Um, Ms. Faith Pullen, our human resources director, she has been diligently working with our health insurance provider to look at options for cost savings. Um, they have some promising leads. We feel, uh, confident that, uh, they're gonna return some options to us that can, uh, generate annual cost savings up to five hundred thousand dollars a year on our health insurance plan. But the issue is we're not gonna get our new rates until November. And so out of abundance of caution, we feel like that we, we need to err on caution and keep that seven percent in the budget just in case. Also in the budget, um, as in every year now for three or four years, one million dollars to cover the cost of paving and street repairs throughout the city. Um, that's a much needed item. Now going to requested positions and expenses, I just want to make a remark about cost cutting. And this relates to Faith and the human resource department as well. Um, she has made some changes that are gonna result in approximately a hundred thousand dollars in cost savings to the city on an annual basis. Um, one of the first things she did regarding payroll, she changed our pay cycle from weekly to bi-weekly. And, um, with our current provider ADP, that generated a cost savings of fifty thousand dollars a year on an annual basis.
So we're not doing that in-house now? I thought we were gonna do it in-house.
Yes, that was my next comment.
Okay.
No, you're fine. We, we are going, uh, from ADP to in-house payroll. Um, we have, um, they're on their schedule. We're gonna start the conversion, the implementation and training in August and September. And we will go live October first with in-house payroll. And that's another fifty thousand dollars a year cost savings. And so Faith and her crew has been working very diligently. And, um, I wanna tip the hat to her and give her the credit on that as well. Before we move on to the, um, comments and highlights of the water fund, um, any comments or question regarding general fund?
Jim, I want to point out that the district attorney asked us to consider funding a special district attorney or assistant DA to handle gang and drug. And Joel, if I'm saying this right, we put the money in the budget. It will not be spent unless it comes back to you with a contract with the DA. I know he asked us to fund part and the county to fund part. And so that is in the budget, but it will not be spent unless a contract is brought back to you to approve.
What, what percentage are we paying of that?
Well, I put a, I put a wag in there of a hundred thousand dollars. Again, that. Again, that we're ways from reaching that point. What I was told, I know what was originally proposed was us pay fifty and some other entities pay fifty.
For one ADA?
Yes, sir.
Well, I can promise you, when I was an ADA, we were not making a hundred thousand dollars.
I realize that, but I assumed it was benefits and then what other expenses he would have, but again, this is there to cover it in the budget, but it would not happen without your specific.
Are other municipalities participating, or is it the city of Carrollton and?
We put it in the budget, again, it won't be funded unless you approve it, and we don't know what they're doing at this point. I just wanted to have it in the budget so we didn't have to amend it later.
In the budget for new positions, we have purchasing directors and agent. Those responsibilities have been under each of the departments, is that correct?
Correct.
Will those responsibilities will shift then to that new director and purchasing buyer as well? Having said that, are there specific positions in certain departments, in any department, that that's their primary role, that we could shift those positions into that role without having to increase the budget?
Absolutely. What, it's gonna cost a little to make the transition, and Jim has got a lot on his plate right now, he's taken on a lot more than he did. Billing the answers to him now, and basically anything that has to do with money is coming under his purview, and so we really think that there are people in positions in other departments that could be transferred to do this job and answer, and they will either answer to Jim or to Faith. I see this happening in the latter half of the fiscal year. There's just too much on our plate right now to try to make this kind of change, but we wanted, again, to include it in the budget.
I think it's appropriate to bring it under one central umbrella, but just wanted to see if there were people already working for the city that could do the job.
Certainly believe that there are, and again, go back to the same thing I said about vehicles. You know, we'll have one department buying paper towel from a certain company and another department buy it from another company, or we'll have one department do an HVAC with a certain maintenance group, another department doing it with a different maintenance group. Whichever's the better group is who we need to use, and if it makes sense for them to be different, we'd leave them different, but if it makes sense for them to be the same, we just think there's gonna be some savings when that's consolidated.
Everybody ready to move to water fund? Okay. The proposed water fund budget totals nineteen point five million. It's a three point nine million dollar increase over the current year budget, approximately twenty-six percent. This budget includes a three percent rate increase, and I will say, even with a three percent rate increase, we are among the lowest water and sewer rates of surrounding jurisdictions, so we're still a very good deal compared to those people around us. This budget proposes to fund major infrastructure upgrades to our water filter plant, our wastewater treatment plant. We're looking at the water filter plant of improvements of approximately two point five million dollars, an improvement to our wastewater plant of two million dollars, and then our ongoing repair and maintenance of water sewer distribution lines of one point five million dollars. Besides our operating revenues, these upgrades and repairs, we anticipate will be funded with a loan that we're going to get through the Georgia Environmental Facilities Authority. The budget calls for debt issue proceeds of four point nine million, but based on our debt service coverage ratio, we can borrow up to eight million and very comfortably service that debt. This money that GIFA offers under this loan program is gonna be at an interest rate of approximately one point eight percent. Certain segments of this loan, if we demonstrate energy savings, could be as low as point eight percent. So it's a good deal for us to use this money to fund these capital upgrades. Would like to make the note that these projects will not be able to be completed all in one fiscal year, they're gonna span multiple years because there's just too much work to get done in a twelve-month period. Also, you've heard us talk about the water sewer debt service coverage ratio. What that ratio is, is where you compare net income of the water fund to the annual debt service expense, and an acceptable ratio is anywhere from one point two to one point five, and our debt service coverage ratio is just over nine, so we're in very, very good shape with the finances that we have to manage debt. Our debt is very, very low, we owe just over six million dollars in total, and compared to other utility systems our size, we have minute debt compared to others, and so.
Jim, again, if I could interject, apologize for continuing to interrupt you, I just want to make sure we're clear on these things. We have six million dollars in the bank in the water fund, the last time I looked, it may have varied a little bit one way or another. We arbitrarily try to not go below three million, and again, that's a number Jim and I agreed to a long time ago. Certainly, we could operate if we only carried three-quarters of a million, but I guess what I'm trying to say is we're cash flush, but when you can borrow money, and we could, these projects will take long enough, we could probably pay them as we go and not incur any debt. When you can borrow money for one point eight percent, and in some cases, point eight, it doesn't make sense to pay, to spend your reserves. I think we've proven ourselves that we're very careful with money, particularly with these utilities, but we've got some things we've gotta do. Tony presented some upgrades to the plant in recent meetings, he's got some bar screen work to be done, and then we've got some ongoing work to do at the water plant, and then we're also planning to do that settling pond, which will take several years. So again, this is a very, very conservative way to fund this, it's something we can very well afford, and we're proposing the rate increase because our rates are so low and this offsets that debt, and we paid off debt. Jim, when did we pay off the debt on the?
May of two thousand sixteen.
Okay, so last year we paid off debt too, so that debt service money's available. But anyway, this is a very conservative approach. Similarly to hiring people, we will not take, we will not borrow it if we don't need it, but it makes more sense when you can borrow it at this rate to borrow them to spend.
Any comments regarding the water fund? Moving on to the sanitation fund, the sanitation fund that we're proposing is six point two million. It's a one point one million dollar increase, twenty-two percent from the current year budget. Like the water fund, it includes a three percent rate increase. Also like the water fund, our garbage rates are very, very low compared to surrounding jurisdictions, and so that is something we're very proud of. Majority, or a good part of this budget increase is to fund new vehicles. We're in dire need of two new garbage trucks and one new street sweeper, all of those combined will be approximately five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. These will be funded through the GMA capital lease pool. I would say this about the equipment, like Joel and like Jimmy, Mike Green, he runs his equipment until it can't run anymore, and he takes very, very good care of his equipment, and when he says something's worn out and needs to be replaced, you can take his word on it, it needs to be replaced, and so we're proposing that replacement of those equipment items.
Jim, may I interject about the worn-out vehicles?
Yes, sir.
I support that as long as it doesn't cause the employees to have to work harder because of outdated equipment and vehicles. I just want to go on record for saying that.
Duly noted.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. The other thing, we're managing, it's not big increases each year, but our landfill fees, as our tonnage continues to go up, we're having to budget a little more each year for landfill. And as our city grows commercially, residentially, that will be something that we have to look at and fund each year. Hotel motel tax fund, you've already taken action on that. It totals seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars for FY two thousand eighteen. As a result, increase of two hundred and eighty thousand, the result of increasing that tax rate from five percent to eight percent. This money in this fund, it funds our contractual obligations to the convention investors bureau, the chamber of commerce. Also, it will fund tourism, the green belt, the arts center renovations, and the branding initiative, anything to promote tourism and bring people into the city of Carrollton to spend money, and this will be spent and handled out of the hotel motel tax fund.
Question about that. The convention and visitors bureau, what's the difference between that and the city tourism line item?
Now, are you looking at your individual budget, Roy, on the hotel motel? The account number fifty-seven twenty-ten, it's appropriation to the CBB, that is the contractual appropriation that we pay, in other words, their percentage cut of the hotel motel tax that we collect each month goes to them, and the same thing, the contractual percentage obligation that the chamber of commerce gets of the hotel motel tax that we collect each month. Now, I think this is what you're asking, correct me if I'm wrong, but the top part of the hotel motel, city tourism, product development, tourism, concerts, movie, those are items where we have control to spend internally as we, as you appropriate, as you choose for us to spend. And whereas the bottom parts, the other costs, those are contractual commitments to see convention investors bureau and the chamber of commerce. Hazardous materials budget, it's only thirty-five hundred dollars. Basically, our hazmat unit, member cities and governments that we service, you know, it's a regional operation, they pay five hundred dollars in dues each year apiece to the city, and then the thirty-five hundred dollars, we buy small equipment, repair and maintenance of equipment, some training, and then every once in a while, if we go on a big call and get service revenue for a spill cleanup or something like that, we put that in this account as revenue too, but we don't ever budget for that because we simply don't know. A major spill where you have a revenue, you just can't predict when that's gonna happen, it's so few and far between, we just don't ever budget for that. Likewise, the drug seizure fund, the very last fund, we always conservatively estimate a hundred thousand dollars a year in seized revenue, and then Joel and them use that for equipment purchases, training, supplies, repairs, and maintenance. There again, it's almost impossible to estimate how much we're gonna have in drug seizures each year, so we, that's kind of a wag, to be, lack of a better term. I think that's it as far as the funds that's presented to you, so as you know, this is a public hearing, no formal vote will be taken, vote scheduled at your next meeting on July the tenth.
Jim, one other thing I want to point out, and again, I guess this is more for public benefit than even elected officials, because they've heard me say it so many times, but our sanitation fund, our garbage pickup, is what funds our paving in this city, and most cities don't make money at all on their garbage. Our rates are lower than everyone else, and yet we make money, enough money to pay for all the paving that you see, and that takes some time, and it's a great aggravation to people, and it's the milling and the months that we wait to put down paving, but it sure looks good when it's done, and I think you could look back not too many years ago when we weren't doing that.
Yes, sir.
And so, very thankful for the work that the sanitation workers do. Those guys hanging on back of the trash truck are literally paying to pave our roads, their sweat, paying for that, and we very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
That being said, can we work on the potholes a little bit?
Absolutely. I mean, where they are, we'll get them. We've got a good contractor for that, McIntosh Specialty out of Whitesburg, if you know where they are, we'll get him on.
Same thing we've talked about back in February, about the valve bodies and the manholes, and I'm getting a lot of people talking to me still about that situation, we haven't really got into that, raising them up and grouting them in, so. Maple Street seems to be really bad, and Austin and Person and just spots.
We've started the utility work under Maple between the railroad and twenty-seven, so we can prep for paving that at a future date.
Jim, it's Carroll County Library Board appointments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got three open positions that the city appoints for the Carroll County Library Board, two expire June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, that's Ms. Kyle Bohannon, I saw her in the audience earlier, and Ms. and Robin Collins. Also, Ms. Shirley Vassy is on that board, it looks like her term actually expired back in two thousand fifteen, and yeah, if I'm reading that right, so she needs to be, all three would like to be reappointed, all three are eligible, and so unless you have other people you'd like to consider, if you want to take a month and consider, or if you want to reappoint these people, they're willing to serve.
I move we reappoint the three library board commissioners, Kyle Bohannon, Robin Collins, and Shirley Vassy.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second, see more discussion. I've had the pleasure of working with most of these folks on the library expansion project going forward, and I think they're well-deserving, so y'all ready to vote? Everybody in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries, thank you very much, Jim. Takes us down to item number twelve, executive session.
I'll let Chuck walk us through the process of going into executive session, but we've got a couple of real estate matters we need to discuss that are coming up.
We just need a motion and a second and a vote to go into executive session to discuss real estate matters.
Make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the real estate matters.
All in favor? Motion carries, thank you very much. We're going upstairs. Okay, all right. If y'all want to stay, you can, but you know, we're probably gone a little while, and.
I need Joel, Jimmy, and Tommy.
We have snacks up there.
Oh, my God. Like, for real. Is that food upstairs? I'm going to that snack machine, like, I'm for real, I'm not eating shit.
Libby, you have, Gerald, do you have a coffee? Oh, it's warm. Come back to that snack machine.
Small, oh, there. Yeah.
I'm sorry, man.